I have the monitor.
Yeah.
It's in shape.
Grant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. I don't know.
He works out.
That we get a heat.
Yeah.
But let's see how the organization is.
It's exciting, gentlemen.
It's the clouds.
Right? Yeah. I know. I know it's funny. It's a long season. It's on shot up. Yeah. That's when you learn to get your.
Yeah. Of course.
Who's going to?
Things start all the time. Yeah. But it's not taking one. It's like. Yeah. Yeah. It's about fourteen. Oh. The age and the potential. I will see that we're real. I'm going to tweet it. Okay. Right. Yeah. It's showing. Right. Yeah. It's hard. In fact. It's a pride part of it. Yeah.
Yep.
You want to talk with me? If you're prepared to. No, no, no.
There has some. Things. So. Jay. Okay. Okay.
Oh, thank you. That's good. The last place. Many. And that's the awesome weekend we have met. We took the festivals over the. When you came to say in the morning. But it can be directed. So we have. Not a great thing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm not. Yeah. She doesn't. She doesn't. She doesn't. She doesn't. She doesn't. Oh, yeah. But I wouldn't know what I'm saying. And I'm thinking also. Oh, like. Yeah. So she's like, there's one.
Yeah. 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 This is right. What I'm not. That's. That's completely. That's for children.
Yeah. I think so. It's coming out soon.
Hey, okay.
Yeah.
Big boss. Yeah, boys.
Yes. Isn't that what he's trying to do?
Let's get this.
You know. Well, most time for something. They're not. Yeah.
Guys, everything. Evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city of Jervis City Council meeting to order on July 11, 2024 at seven o'clock. First on our agenda. Call. Rob.
Yes, sir.
Altazar.
Yeah.
Michael Gregory here. John.
Here.
Joel.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like you all to stand for remove your hats, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I'd you look at this. To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, in the law, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's bring this to our public comment. Please remember, this is a business meeting of the city council. The city best value and welcomes public input on matters that concerns the city. Please address the council as a whole, whether than an individual, council members or staff. Council actions on the items brought up in public comment submitted by Oregon Open Meeting Laws. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration on a later date. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, but an optional two minutes for council questions and answers. If you wish to address the council, please come forward, state your name, address at the podium, and identify yourself for the record. Please come forward.
Can I just stand? You're holding on.
Yeah, I don't think the microphones work. I don't think the microphones working.
Okay. Uh, my name is Cindy Jensen, and I live at 1068 Street in Jervis. And I'm just here to thank. Well, I'm here. Michael. Well, and John. For the job that they have done, the integrity that they got, kept up with all the turmoil that they've had to deal with. Yeah, but I just, we should all be just, you've done great things for our city, and I want to. So, thank you.
Welcome. Well, if there's no further comment, we're going to move on. Okay, thank you. On the consent calendar, the approval of the minutes for June 13, 2024, the approval of the bill list for June of 2024. Anybody has some questions, I'll be asking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Very good. I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the committee reports. Uh, there's nothing here on the city council meeting agenda. So I would like to say that we've got another Fourth of July behind us. Everybody seemed to have a very good time. I know the weather was hot, but it all looks like it was a very successful event, and I want to thank the chief. I want to thank the city, uh, the city works department, Warren, the administration, Roger. Everything went smooth, so I could have wanted for nothing else. Everything was perfect. John, I do appreciate the raffle. How you took care of that, Joel. And Sylvia, yes. Did you have a comment, John?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that we, uh, did better than we did. I think I believe we took in another.
Okay. Uh, Roger, did you do any tally, any counting of the donations, the raffle money? Uh, the parks fund or maybe Laura has some of those numbers?
It's hovering right around fifty now at all.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, guys. Everybody worked hard and it all, it paid off. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is, uh, new business. Um, oh, well. Yeah, I know, the swearing in. No, the swearing in. Do you want to comment on that, chief?
Yes, we're gonna ask to do the swearing in our next meeting. Um, I've actually sworn to that again, but public swearing in we'd like to do is get some family members that we'd like to be present that are not be here tonight. So we have to move to next time.
Yeah, this all just came about today. I was all prepared, practice and everything, but yeah, it'll carry on. It'll happen. Uh, new business. So, uh, we're looking at the update on the recall process, the new selection of counselors. I'm going to turn this over to our attorney.
Okay, if all of the unofficial results are out, everybody knows what those numbers are. There's a statute, we'll read it for you, so everybody knows what it is. It's number two fifty-four point five forty-six, subsection two. It says acceptance provided in subsection three, which I'm right here, uh, for purposes of the Oregon Constitution. The result of a recall election referred to in this section shall be considered officially declared on the day the abstract of votes is delivered. And it's delivered by the, by the elections official of the county to the elections official of the city, who at this point is the city manager. And he should be receiving it in the next few days. The, uh, they have until five o'clock Monday to deliver it. Um, and, uh, it can be delivered in person, I think by email, any, any way it comes in. So, uh, if not sooner, the recall election results will be final at five o'clock or a little before that on Monday. Um. I guess the, the results are that four counselors were, were recalled, uh, which will leave two council members, uh, to serve. Uh, I said council members and mayor and counselors. Uh, two, two will remain, uh, and would you like me to discuss those other matters at this point?
Yes, this is your time to update everybody on this. I want to have everybody to have all the information.
I, I wrote a short memo, uh, of two questions that were asked of me. And the first is whether the two council members may appoint, uh, people to fill vacancies and how. And the charter says that the vacancies occur upon recall, so figure as of Monday, around five o'clock, uh, there will be vacancies. Uh, and such, uh, section thirty-two says a mayor or, or council vacancy will be filled by appointment by a majority of the remaining council members. As a result, the two council members may fill vacancies by approval of the majority, which is two. Because one is just half. So they, uh, so they must both agree to approve any, uh, any positions being filled. Uh, this is my interpretation. It's not, uh, that, that part is pretty clear. The next sentence I'm going to say is my interpretation, which can either be adopted by the city council or not. Because city councils interpret their, the code, the charter of the city, not the city attorney. Uh, and that, uh, is that the two remaining could fill the seats one at a time, or because nothing prohibits such an action, they could probably vote on a slate of two or more at the one vote. Seen that done in a number of cities. It's not a, uh, it's not very radical an idea. Uh, if anybody wanted to challenge it, I'd be happy to talk about it, but I don't, I don't think it's a big deal. Uh, the second question that came up was, uh, may the two remaining council members carry on business with or without the appointment of council members to fill vacant seats? This is a question that in case they don't agree on filling seats, uh, my answer is yes, but the council needs to approve that, uh, as a, uh, an interpretation of the charter. And, uh, as it says in, in this in section, that's number two down at the bottom. Section thirteen of the charter says that, uh, the express approval of a majority of a quorum of council is necessary for any council decision, except when the charter requires approval by a majority of the council. So there are a few things that require a majority of the full council. Those things probably can't get done if there are only two, uh, people sitting. But the other piece of it is the majority of the quorum of the council, uh, is necessary for the decision. So what is a quorum? Uh, it's defined in section twelve. It says the majority of the council members is a quorum. This is, uh, this refers to, again, to the, to the members of the council, just like the, uh, section thirty-two on filling vacancy, uh, said refers to members. It doesn't refer to positions or seats or anything. So it, so it appears to mean that, uh, the number of members of the council, a quorum of them, uh, a majority of the quorum. It looks like a quorum of two, uh, members is two, and a majority of them is two. So it appears that if the two members of council agree on any business, they could carry on the business of the city without having filled any seats, uh, if they're unable to. Uh, and again, my, the last word, sentence on my, uh, my, uh, advice here is that council is free to accept and adopt this interpretation as its own, to reject it or to take no action on. So if you want to take action on it so that there's no question later, uh, if there are only two members, I would recommend to do that. But if you don't want to, you don't have. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
You're welcome. New discussion from the council?
Speak. I, I have no problem. No matter what happens, even if it were to appoint or not appoint. By the time they even get to the point where they can start even doing this, it's just going to be true. I said, then pick another election anyway. So for me, this, I, I would say.
So if we were to adopt this, how do we go about that? I want to have resolution in front of me.
It would simply be my motion, a motion to adopt those, uh, those interpretations of the charter as the council's interpretation.
Joel? You have anything?
Well, my question is. Uh, to the. It's a. Election.
So you're saying run as is until election?
Yeah.
If you adopt those, those two recommendations, yes, the city can continue to run. I think you can anyway, but that would make it very clear to anybody who asks that the council intend for the city to be able to run until the election. Uh, the charter does say that seat vacancies will be filled, but obviously that's only possible if it's possible. Two members agree. So if that, if they agree, then the city can still run until the election in November. Then those folks get sworn in and become council members at the first meeting in January. So it's possible that there may only be two council members until January. We don't know how this will play out over the next few months.
Very good. Altazar, do you have any input?
We have, uh. Several people that are kind of interested, but I. I right now have not spoken to them. I wish that I could.
Okay. Yeah, there are no vacancies at the moment, so that's appropriate.
I'll have to, uh, talk to them. Close this day. Uh, we were gonna have, uh. It's posted for, uh. Wanting to be on the council. I don't know if you're, that's, you got any applications out?
Let, let me say, Roger asked me a couple of questions about it, and I went to the secretary of state's office because the secretary of state's office has authority over the elections officers of the counties and cities. And I've asked a couple of questions. I got a first response this morning, just about noon, kind of ten minutes to noon. I haven't had a chance to digest it yet, uh, but I will be talking to Roger, uh, tomorrow about it. I'll give him a copy of this email, and, uh, we'll go forward from there and get back to council with and publicize what is going, uh, the recommended action. Uh, because secretary of state's office had some interpretations of the statutes that aren't necessarily what you might think they are. So, uh, we want to make sure that it's all done, uh, according to oil on the up and up, no, no issues, no mistakes. That's what we do today.
Is that, uh, attorney privilege right there? Or can we get a copy?
Sure, I, I can get, I can get you all copies. I, I really have to say, I was in meetings all afternoon, so I really wasn't reading it, so I sat down here, uh, just a few minutes. So, but yes, I will forward it to, uh, to, uh, this president and have her, uh, uh, forward it to the whole council. That, that's.
Okay, yes. I like.
Sure.
Rob, do you have any input?
Say we.
All right, I, uh, I would recommend that, uh, someone make a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation.
I'll make, uh, the motion that we accept and adopt this interpretation from our attorneys. I said it.
Okay, motion carries. I want to call for an individual vote. Rob Vlad.
Aye.
Altazar Gonzalez.
Is that? A question? But, uh, resolution. Do what?
What? Yes.
Our attorney's recommendation on, on a term, take care of business for the city until, uh, the vacancies are fulfilled or into election, and we replace the council members.
The interpretation that says that, it's an interpretation that says that the two, uh, council members, uh, who will remain to fill the vacancies and carry on, transact any ordinary city business, uh, until and unless the seats are filling.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Joel?
Yes. Yes.
Don Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries. We've accepted the, uh, attorney's recommendation. Thank you. Next, we have a res- resolution, uh, resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero eight. We'll have to update the list of signatures for the city of Jervis. Roger, do you want to just talk about that?
With several people that were signers, uh, leaving. We have to have the ability to pay the bills. Not everybody is available at all times. We have a sign check, so we have two, two signatures required for check signing. So as a matter of convenience and keeping the lights on, uh, that is my suggestion that we go ahead and do that.
Okay, I think we have one choice. Uh. Go ahead, John. So. Well, I do believe Altazar Gonzalez is already a check signer. Joel will be the remaining council member, so that's our.
There, there's me, and we're suggesting to file, uh, that could also.
Okay. I thought it had to be of the council. Okay, so do you have a recommendation?
It's, it's on, it's in the resolution. My se- my suggestion is myself.
I see now.
Yeah. JR and, uh. Joel. Wow. And that, that we've, we've got coverage and it works into our, uh, control, control matrix nicely.
Okay, so the next, the two is going to be, uh, Joel and the super getting guy. Okay, so then I guess all we're waiting for is a rest, is someone to make the motion. Ever. Hey, then, uh. I'll make the motion. Resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero eight, the resolution to update the list of signatures of the city of Jervis. Uh, whereas in the electoral, the recall, those four council members, it is necessary to update the list of authorized signatures of the city of Jervis. Now therefore, the city's, uh. Section one, authorized signatures. The following individuals are authorized to sign the document of the city of Jervis. City manager Roger Brown, public work superintendent Kyle. Joel. Raymond, uh, Ramon, and Councilor Altazar Gonzalez. Section two, as signing of the resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero eight, resolution number twenty-one dash zero seven. It's hereby re. Re-candid. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that would take the other signers off. Okay, do I have a?
No, sir.
Your motion, do I have a second?
No, sir.
Well, very good. Thank you. Those were. Don Harvey?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Altazar?
Yeah. Yes.
Rob Vlad? Okay, motion carries. There's your signature, signers.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the res- resolution giving authority to open accounts and deposits, withdraws funds from the Umpqua Bank. Go through that with us, Roger.
That basically is just re-authorizing the accounts to be held at Umpqua Bank. And the signers have just passed this previous resolution. The, the, that's what the bank needs to see.
Any questions from the council? Anyone like to make a motion to, uh, accept resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero nine? Okay. Joel has made a motion, uh, resolution giving authority to the open accounts and deposits with, with draw funds from the Umpqua Bank. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we had a motion by Joel, and we had a second by. Paul. Okay, I give it to John. All with favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. No, there is on my agenda, I have no. Protein. B, we did resolution.
Did the.
Yeah. And we did, uh, yeah, twenty-four dash service zero eight, twenty-four dash service zero nine. Uh, now we're gonna make the staff reports, and I call on the chief.
Alright, so the calls for service, cap report one twenty-nine, arrest one, traffic offense three, traffic written warnings thirteen, agency assists outside city eleven seven, uh, agency assist inside city one three. Acting class sergeant Carlos Camacho, and I attended a mass casualty incident training in Mount Angel. We learned some valuable skills while strengthening our partnership with several local police departments and fire departments during training. Sergeant Camacho has continued to show his leadership skills, which showed during the parade and while working with Jervis Police Department's most recent hire, Officer Brad. Officer Brad's first day with the Jervis Police Department was Monday, July first. First day was filled with joy of paperwork and getting acclimated to the department. Uh, with firearms during the following day with the assistance of, uh, Hubbard Police Department. Um. Officer Brad will be a valuable addition to the, to this department. Please take the time to say hello to, hello when you see her, controlling the city of Jervis. I would also like to thank several citizens for showing their support to Officer Brad, whether on social media or with some of the many citizens that came to the PB and said hello, and also during the Fourth of July celebrations. Uh, Officer Dryden led the parade again and did an excellent job. She's kind of been our parade leader for the last three events. Uh, Officer Dryden has been expressing interest in some upcoming training that will help her, the community, and the Jervis Police Department. Uh, seeing Officer Dryden's desire to improve her skills with, while helping teach the rest of the department. What she has learned is invaluable. Administrative assistant. Camacho, uh, Crystal Camacho has been doing an excellent job along with the assistance of Ken Rubin. They did an extensive audit of the Jervis Police Department's evidence. This, despite the undertaking, several laws and procedures must be followed. Uh, Mrs. Camacho has been doing this while trying to reorganize files and working on implementing new ideas on the Facebook page. Several ideas we look to implement have come from all the members of the department that are assist the community members. Um, and the police position update. Uh, we look to have the, uh, next position filled hopefully by the end of the month. Our tax officer is also certified and. But then the next couple of days, he'll probably be able to get his two weeks notice, uh, with everything going forward. And we should have them by the officers.
Very good. Thank you very much. I think I know where that extra donation, spare money for the raffles came. But don't take. Thank you, sir. Roger? All right, can you speak for the public work department, or is there anything you can? Give us some input on, anything we need to know? I noticed over here at the lift station, we had a couple of poles that were bent over.
Yeah, that I don't, we don't know who did that. Uh, if it was done at night, there wasn't enough light over there to, uh, see much of anything. Uh, something errors, so.
Was there any damage?
Well, three poles were knocked over.
Any damage to our pump, lift station, water, anything like that?
Uh, nothing that I'm aware of.
I spoke with the public works director. He advised that the things were pushed over the, the concrete poles. It'll be approximately a thousand dollars to get them to put back up. It did not affect anything. The concern is, is maybe somebody even driving off two of those without them there. So they'll be working on getting those up as quick as possible, but there was no damage to the pump station other than poles being knocked over.
Roger, did you hear anything about our splash plant out in our, out of our park? I, I've heard that it's, I was told last meeting that it was up and running, and I'm hearing it's not up and running. Is there any update?
All that I know is that they're waiting for some parts. Uh, something broke about certain of the mechanical things that happen, but they're, as, as soon as the parts arrive, they're gonna put a band together and turn it back on.
Uh, was there anything else in the Public Works Department, uh, pumps, generators, anything else that council should be concerned about, or the public should know about?
Uh, not at this time. The, uh, the news that we do have is the wastewater treatment plant, uh, percentage of completion basis money-wise is about forty percent of the fleet. Construction-wise, it's closer to eighty percent. Uh, the, the dollar loading for the, the finishing of it, that's worth big money. It's the it's the motors and the pumps and aerator screens and those types of things that are, uh, expensive components. So they, at the, at the rate they're going, they're probably gonna finish before a deadline.
Very good. And our financials are all, will support all that?
Yes. And I'll, I'll detail that, uh, in my report.
Very good. As far as the administration goes, do you have a report for us?
Oh, I've got a couple of things. I've got a bill list. We've got balance in our Umpqua Bank account of three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars change. Uh, in the, uh, pool fund, there's three million eight twenty-six, five sixteen uh, for a total of, of just a little bit over, uh, a little under, uh, four point two one eight billion dollars total this last month. Uh, you're, you're gonna say this is a lot of money. Well, it is a lot of money. Four hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. Three hundred nineteen six twelve of that is payments to RNG construction that, uh, Arpo grant as payments. So it's money in, money out. One little, one little bit of good news, uh, on our short-term Bergen Fund. We've got a ten percent increase in our interest rate, which means an additional, we don't have to do anything to bank another forty thousand dollars a year in that fund if we have an average balance of, uh, four million dollars. So that's the news. That, that's the government pool fund. So, um, for my report, Harper has forwarded us grant funds in a total of four hundred twenty-six thousand eleven dollars, which pays for all the disbursements we've made so far. Uh, to the water, wastewater treatment plant contractor. Uh, budget documents have been filed with the Oregon Department of Revenue and Marion County Assessment Office. And we've gotten received emails from them, so that we know that they've received them. Uh, one bit of news that is not so much fun is the city or the Jervis School District has breached their contract with us for payment of police services. Uh, this was out publicized because the breach was not official until the first day of July, then the contract would have been renewed. Uh, I'd ask you to speak, uh, to that as to what the status of it is.
Uh, thank you, Roger. The, uh, school district had, had brought their, uh, part-time attorney in. Uh, and we have had a meeting or two, a couple of phone conferences. School district seems to be resisting paying the eighty-nine thousand dollars they owe the city, uh, and, uh, yeah, I mean, this is, it's not good form for cities, uh, and for two government agencies not to, uh, pay their bills to each other on time. So we're trying to resolve it through a, uh, discussion, giving them all the information they're asking for. Uh, we think we've provided them everything they need, uh, and, uh, we think they ought to pay. If we can't, the city does have the ability to, uh, go to collect. And we don't want to do that. It's not a good way for, uh, government agencies to behave with each other, but that could, could happen. Uh, and that is a hammer that's out there. The, the State Department of Revenue also frowns on it, and we may, uh, talk to them about ways that, uh, the state can help, uh, in that this was grant money. And we're not sure that, uh, because it was allocated to the police services, we're not positive that unless they've got it sitting in an account somewhere, that they're using it for the proper allocated purpose that it was granted. So, uh, we will be talking to them about this more, and we hope to get paid fairly soon. Now, having said all of that, um, the budget process. Uh, when Roger was hired, uh, personally, I was kind of in a, in a panic. Uh, I didn't know how much he knew about budgeting at, uh, at the government level, and he didn't all know all that much. He had had budgeting, uh, experience in the private sector, but not in, uh, in the public sector. He applied himself, and I am amazed really at what he did. Came up with a budget. It got, uh, adopted, it got, uh, pushed through. There's a substantial reserve amount in there that, that makes the city fiscally in a very, very good place. Uh, and so even though there's been a lot of turmoil in the city, and some people may think that Roger was brought in, uh, on a political hire, he's doing a very good job. Uh, just that's me talking as, as a lawyer from the outside. I see a lot of cities, you know, what cities need is a, a really good fiscal manager. Uh, in the other cities, we have really good ones, and, uh, and I'd say Roger's as good as any of them, despite his, uh, relative inexperience in the field. So he's, he's studying, he's, he's taking classes and things, and he's found a mentor to help him to do it, and, uh, I want to say thank you, Roger. You made it so I didn't have to get involved with the budget process, which I don't want.
Oh, thank you, Ed. I appreciate your confidence and abilities. Thank you very much. One other comment I've got is, uh, JR, I've got a check over here for you to sign, so we can, uh, pay our, our contractor for, we just got a bill from him. It's, uh, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars change, so I, I think they're gonna be interested in, in receiving that from us.
Uh, does any of the other council members have a question for Roger? Uh, it has to do with the, I, did, did the school know, or did they sign the contract, or did they open up an envelope that is a surprise bill for, for this?
I, no, they're, they're sort of intergovernmental agency contract with them.
They're, they're supposed to pay monthly, and they didn't. Uh, typically, under the previous chief, apparently no bill was ever sent, and, uh, the, the district may have paid once per year. Uh, which wasn't like the terms of the agreement where it's a little, uh, there were lots of things in that contract that weren't exactly followed, uh, and, uh, the school district ran into extreme fiscal difficulties this last year, and so was probably trying to cover all their bases and make sure that they have every penny they needed. I don't fault them for that, but now that they have gotten their ball passed and, and things are back in order, uh, they really should pay a bill at this.
Yeah, I mean, there's always two sides to every story, and I, I heard this side of the story. I just wanted to know if there was another side that we all should be hearing.
Well, one, one thing that I would consider is if we do renew the contract with it, that we're not gonna finance it for a year and wait to get paid for a year. We're gonna get paid monthly. For the, for the time of service that we have an officer over there, we're gonna get paid monthly.
Yeah, see, we don't know if there was another agreement made that wasn't in writing. So I, I don't want to just jump to an illusion. If, if I remember right, the agreement says that any amendments have to be in writing, but we all know how that works.
I, I got a question for Roger. Now, if I'm correct, we also pay the street. I want to say excise tax, but is that what it is?
Yes, there's an excise tax on new buildings. A dollar fifty-nine per square foot for, um, residential, and I believe it's fifty-eight cents a square foot for commercial. Uh, we have paid them every dime that we owe them for excise tax.
So I guess my question is, how often do we pay them? Do we wait for new housing to get done, or do we?
It's based on building permits. And, you know, they, they want it to be paid quarterly. Uh, I want to get, get it paid at the time that uh, we, we collect, collect the fees. Uh, that way it's in and out of our books, and, uh, we don't have to worry about it. And they have the money, uh, before they probably were expecting it.
Thank you. Roger, anything else on your report?
Uh, not that I can think of, but I have a whole question.
Do you have, uh, after the finalization, do you have a process you're going to follow for applicant, applicants to fulfill the vacant positions of the council?
Uh, yes, and that will be announced on our website after the certification, probably two days after. I want to have council, uh, review the final language to make sure that we're fully in compliance, so that there's no room for anyone to say that we didn't do it right.
Very good. Does that conclude your report?
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you.
Next, I'd love his business from mayor and council. Council, do you have anything? Thank you for your service, John. Joel?
Yeah.
Walt Disar?
Yeah.
Rob? Okay. So that would conclude our city council meeting. Thank you all.